I call the committee to hold a order.
Thank you. So thanks again so much for having me back one more time to talk about local topics. Diane let me know that she wasn't going to be here, but I did speak with her about sort of what kinds of records retention schedules you guys have in place. It sounds like she worked with the village to develop a new one relatively recently. So she asked if I didn't touch on record retention schedules, but rather just dive into sort of the background of public record retention. And a lot of this is going to be more informing you probably at a higher level of detail than you wanted on what Lynn goes through. But I think that in light of, you know, things like email retention being such a hot item in the news lately, you know, and through like the last year, it's healthy and good to refresh on it and also touch on, you know, emerging issues in records retention, like things with social media accounts, interactions that are, you know, not in the traditional method or mode of records that this law was written around. So kind of talk about some of the emerging issues a little bit.
And we actually have had some recent requests over the last several months as far as emails and texts and those sort of things, so.
Right, so it's, you know, it was really interesting reading through, you know, the statutes and then considering, holy cow, you know, we communicate in so many different mechanisms now and loads of different platforms and just reminding ourselves constantly that it's not the format, it's the content that is what is public record and really being cognizant of that because we do communicate in so many different ways now. It can be really easy to not think of something as a public record, but just refreshing ourselves on, you know, what constitutes a record and what might be later summoned or requested. I just also wanted to share with you guys as well too. So last year I was in a 50-50 role with Outagamey-Winnebago County, so I wasn't quite as accessible because I was working in both counties. But as of 2018, I am full-time in Outagamey County and they're hiring a counterpart in Winnebago County. So that's awesome. That means if, you know, you ever do have needs in the future at a village level or residential level, please let me know. I definitely have a lot more hours in the week now that I can commit to Outagamey County communities. And I'm also going to be sending out a letter later this month that I'll direct to your chair and your clerk and then he'll sort of disperse from there that just highlights a couple upcoming programs we have coming up. One of them is geared toward plan commissioner training that one has not been hosted out of Outagamey County in quite a while. So that will be in April over in the town of Capana. We're kind of hoping to regionally attract some Brown County, Calumet County as well. We did one in Winnebago County last year, so we're trying to geographically target some out-of-county folks. And there's also going to be a planning and land use webinar series I'll be hosting remote listening sites for. It costs $20 per webinar to attend normally, but if you listen with me, it's free. And that's one of the benefits we get to offer to constituents. So I'll certainly keep you in the loop as those come forward. And the last program I'm really excited is coming forward. I'm going to be, this is geared more toward residents, but I think that local elected officials will take particular interest in it. I'm conducting a series at the NINA and Appleton Public Libraries on civility. And we're trying to coach and educate residents and how to actually have civil discourse, I think, in part because we interact so much on social media now, we've kind of lost the skill of being able to civilly disagree with one another. You know, we can very easily rattle off a nasty comment on Facebook, but how many of us can say that we've actually had a face-to-face civil conversation when we disagreed on a topic? So I'm really excited. I think civil discourse is really important to democracy and I see it as a great way to get extension involved and engage in building stronger communities. So into the topic at hand. All right, so the why of public records, why exactly do we have public records? What is the purpose of them? What can you expect to be subchecked to as elected officials? And like I said, what does your legal custodian of records, your clerk, have to deal with when requests come in? You know, just to sort of have a better understanding of what your clerk goes through gives you a much better perspective of what can be expected of you as an elected official and how you can be cautious of how you're storing and retaining things so that everyone's job is easier if a request does come through. So I'm going to cover four things today. Why do we have to share public records? What happens when records are requested? What does a well-written request for records look like? And how would municipalities go about responding to records requests? So the why is pretty obvious, I think. The goal of public records and the ability of having records requested is in the interest of transparency, to keep functions of government open and accessible to the public. A lot of this training, I think I was handing out our open meetings training, just reminding folks that these laws are in place to protect the best interests of the constituents that you serve. It assists members of the public to be better informed, provides generally oversight over things occurring at the local government level. And it's safe to assume, or at least adopt the assumption in your practices, that things that you use and methods of communication to discuss public official business, you generally assume that they are able to be requested. That's sort of a good best practice to follow. There will be some exceptions, but they're rare, so it's always a good more practice to consider, okay, if I'm communicating as an elected official, there's a chance that this could be requested. Am I, you know, communicating in a fashion that I would be comfortable if this ever came out of touch to my name? Not to say like, you know, big brother, but behave as though big brother is watching. So while the role of responding to records requests really falls upon your legal custodian of records or your clerk, understanding the ins and outs of what your clerk encounters and how the process works can hopefully help lend itself to conducting better practices as an elected official. So a couple of things I was curious about were, do you guys use personal emails or do you all have village emails?
Some of each.
Okay. And is there only one social media channel for the village or do, you know, some trustees operate their own sort of as a way of interfacing with constituents?
Does anybody have their own Facebook page that they use for village items?
It's way easier.
Twitter.
I share them on my Facebook page, but I don't.
But she's sharing things from the village site.
Right, but you don't have like your own personal one that's like, you know, trustee? Okay. That makes it way easier.
Like a non-for-profit group like Friends of the Library, I'm going to add me in on the Friends of the Library, but not the Public Library.
Okay, okay, and that's a little different. So the reason I asked is because, and we'll get into this a little bit later, just as there are expectations to archive records that are in traditional format, like, you know, things in writing, emails, there are also expectations that social media content be archived and accessible should a request ever come forward. And you have to be really cautious about your messaging, obviously with social media, even without a request that's public because it's in the public space and it's visible, but you have to be cautious about like having a social media policy in place that specifically states when things are archived, as well as if you have rules or moderator that maybe would delete inappropriate language or something on a page. You have to be very cautious of that because that is technically a public record if it is a social media channel that's being used for official public business. We'll come more into that later, but that's just an example of the new kinds of challenges we have to consider with record retention with social media becoming such a ubiquitous form of communication. So what happens when public records are requested? Requests can have to be submitted formally, but formal can mean written or verbal. The custodian of the record would receive the request, in this case Lynn. They would search for records that are requested, you know, obviously weighing, are there any records that would be exempt from this that we should not be sharing with the public? Usually the answer is no, there's not a whole lot of exceptions. And applying a balancing test, which is kind of loosey-goosey. I mean, it's a very case-by-case scenario, as it should be. You know, you don't want blanket rules when it comes to things like transparency, but you would weigh the benefits to the public interest of sharing information publicly with public safety. That comes up a lot more often when you're talking about records that police departments might hold. You know, would it be safe to release this information or am I actually endangering someone by releasing this?
And then there's some personnel records as well.
Right, so if it's, you know, personal records regarding like an ongoing investigation, that would be something where there'd be an exception to the timeframe when you'd need to release it. And once you've weighed the balancing test, sought out those records, you would either release them in writing to the requesting party, or if you're unable to release them, you would explain why. And that also accounts for the fact that there may be some redactions where part of a record may be public and address the request, but there may be a part that you're not able to share. It might be something like, you know, personal home address information or social security numbers, for example. So anybody generally can request to inspect or receive a copy of a record. There are some more strict limitations for those who are committed under mental health laws or are incarcerated. Generally, individuals have access to a greater amount of information about themselves than about others. And requesters do have a certain level of anonymity that is allowed. They don't necessarily need to state the purpose of the request or identify themselves directly. Motive is not necessarily relevant, but the context of why they're asking is considered. And again, looking to apply that balancing test to make sure that public safety is still preserved while still preserving transparency. I'll talk a little bit more about sensitive info and police department exceptions toward the end of the presentation, so we will circle back to that. So the first thing after you receive a request, requests generally should be somewhat clear. And again, I'll circle back on this, but it shouldn't be a guessing game of what the requester is trying to find out. Not saying that they have to know the full intent, but the more clarified a request comes in, the easier it is for the custodian to seek out the records. And it's okay and it's legal to ask for clarification, you know, not to sort of dig into, you know, what does this person want or who are they, where are they from, but to actually make sure that you're supplying relevant records. If you get a very broad, large-scale requesting, like, you know, I want record of every single transaction that occurred, you know, in 10 years involving all of these parties, it may be a massive request and it would really put a huge burden of both time and possibly financial resources on municipality to comply. So seeking clarification is okay. And I provided you guys an example of what a well-written request for records looks like. It's the one on the, it's got like a question mark on one side and a checkmark on the other. The question mark one is a really poorly written request that you should prompt for clarification. If you get something that's that vague, it also comes across as kind of standoffish, you know, they say like, we expect not to be charged for this. The well-written one gives significantly more explanation to the custodians so that they can provide the best records, not waste any more time than is necessary for the municipality, and provide records that are meaningful to the person requesting them. And sometimes it involves a few layers of interaction to really get into what records you're looking for, so I can do the best job to still put our government transparency, but really adequately respond to the request that you put forward. Most of the time, it is actually a public record and I list a bunch of things that constitute public record, such as being created by the authority, in the authority's possession, personal emails, texts, calls for documents that are on the business account. So if you're conducting, you know, personal business on your village or county account, then technically it's a public record. Same goes the other way if you're conducting business communication on your personal email. That doesn't mean that the rest of your personal emails would be subject to public record, but any business-related conversations that happen on your personal account would constitute. Same thing goes for cell phones. It is recommended that municipalities do use independent email addresses that have, you know, the storage on a server or on government-issued laptops, phones, et cetera, but that's understanding that not every municipality operates in that fashion, not every municipality has the budget to, you know, purchase technology and man the IT needs of having that, but that is generally the best practice. Not to say it's the only way you can do things, but that's the clearest cut-and-dry way of saying, if it's related to village or municipal business, communicate on this device and on this account. That way, we have a clear understanding of which accounts come under public scrutiny. And, you know, obviously there was a lot of attention last year and the year prior with, and I'm just using this because this is a really well-known example, but with the Department of State's emails, you know, having multiple phones and devices that were not connected to government servers that had emails that came into question, it ended up becoming a security issue, but they were also able to be requested under records law. So it's just a well-known example. I'm not, you know, making a political statement, but it always works best when you use your designated account and you recognize while using that account, this is my public account, I'm generally in public business on this account, this is all subject to open records requests, rather than sort of blurring the lines between devices and between communication channels. Social media content does constitute a public record if it's on a public channel. And that also means that, like I said, you have to be cautious about deleting things. So even if there's somebody, and there always is, I mean, just look on the comments section like the post crescent, there's always somebody who's mad about something and really crosses the line, usually with language. And that, you know, is not the kind of thing that you want on your municipal social media channel, but if you do take a policy of deleting comments that maybe don't fit the language that you want to have, you do have to archive them. You need to have a record of, this was deleted because it didn't fit our policy, but we have an archive of it being here and we can justify why it was deleted. So really staying on top of having a paper trail, even if it's a digital occurrence. That leads right into the next bullet point about electronic records. It does not matter that it is electronic, it is the content, not the format, that makes it a public record. So that means that emails, database files, presentations, audio and video files, social media posts, text messages on cell phones that relate to public business. It's not about what kind of device it is, it's not about how the communication's occurring. It's about having it be a communication related to public business. Another example of someone, I don't know, more state-level trying to get around this was, this is sort of dating itself now, but they used to have the direct messaging available on BlackBerry devices. I think, I never had BlackBerry, I think it was called PIN messaging, where basically like you could communicate one-on-one with another person. It wasn't quite a text message, it was an exclusive BlackBerry channel. And the governor of New York, Andrew Cuomo, communicated readily on that because his opinion was that was not a public record. It is. And if it's related to government business, it is. So we've had to kind of adjust the legalities to keep up with all the modes of technology, but the safest thing to assume is it doesn't matter what format the conversation's having in, and if it is a conversation that is related to public business, it is requestable. So, you know, in some of those cases, maybe they had negative motives for discussing things in different ways. I'm not assuming anyone here would do that, but just always remembering, content, not the format. One thing that's not a record, and there can sometimes be confusion about this, would be drafts. And it's really important that we define drafts. Drafts under the way the law is intended and written refer to like your personal notes. Personal notes that you use within your public capacity, it does not mean a not finalized draft of something. So it's, it means personal notes. As soon as you are to share personal notes or drafts with someone else for the interest of decision-making, it no longer is a personal note or draft, then it becomes a record. So it's just sort of important to distinguish that, that if it's being used to make a decision by a group, it's not personal anymore. It then is a mode of group communication being used to make a public decision. Now, things that would not be records would be like published materials available for sale through your library, purely personal property, or material that has limited access for intellectual property reasons, like a patent or a copyright. I was going to ask too if you guys have a formal social media policy for your village child. I asked the local government center specifically if they do any education on that, and they do not right now, but I did encourage them to do so because I think it's something that a lot of municipalities would love to look at and see and maybe do an audit of their own social media and say, you know, we haven't run into an issue yet hopefully, but are we doing the best things we can in terms of the social media realm to make sure that our best interest is protected if we do get a request, so that we don't end up in a sticky legal mess? And there doesn't seem to be any, at least from the local government center, and I haven't seen any from the league, any like direct social media policy education. But if any comes out soon, which I'm hoping we will maybe this will be here, I'll be sure to circle back and share.
And it says that they are still developing policies that people can use.
Yeah. It's one of these things that is evolving as social media evolves. So, I mean, we definitely have more and more rates of communication and mechanisms of communication come out much faster than we normally legislate. So it's an interesting time to be discussing this. So, and considering the scope of a public record request, this kind of comes back to what I said before, where it is our goal that everyone that requests records has read this presentation online and knows, okay, here's how I should be requesting information. Actually, there are even Freedom of Information websites that provide pretty darn good samples of record request letters, so you can just hope like anyone asking has maybe Googled it a little bit, maybe saw this, but not always the case. You're sometimes going to get really poorly worded requests, requests that are very unclear, requests that are combative, but it is okay and legal to request clarification if a request is too broad, if there are way more technically responsive requests than you suspect the person wants or needs, and if a request is going to be exceptionally burdensome because of how broad the scope is. It's okay at that point to request clarification. And there's definitely a part to doing it so that it really translates as I'm trying to provide the best customer service I can, you know, I'm here in keeping with the law, but I also want to respect your time, your needs, and, you know, our resources as a local government. So it is okay to request that clarification. Clarification should be done in a written format and should convey your understanding based on the first request and then ask additional questions as needed. I did provide that example of the checkmark-question mark sheet, that's a great one to refer back to, but a well-written records request generally includes a carefully framed request to produce records of interest. If it is seeking a particular document, it might identify it by date, author, title, search terms, or providing what they think maybe an email might contain can be very useful if you have to search through emails. Directing the request directly to the legal custodian is best, so it doesn't have to work through multiple people. And also identifying if costs are a concern. You can charge for copies of things, but there are a lot of parameters on what is considered an excessive cost. You can't put a cost on something that is so burdensome that would actually prohibit someone from asking, so it's a pretty low number of what you can actually charge someone. There are some things you can charge, like for example, if, and I doubt that you guys do this, but like City of Milwaukee, you know, such a large municipality, so many people, so many records to track, they don't store all of their records on-site. You know, they pay for offsite storage for a large number of records. So you could actually assess back, you know, incurred costs that relate to going offsite to like locate those records. Not really an issue here, I'd imagine, but it is pretty limited. And some costs in a limited way can be directly passed on to the requester, but not all of them. So you can't pass on the cost of redacting something. So it gets confusing. It's definitely filled with a lot of gray areas and you always want to, you know, make sure you're doing things the legal way when you do it, but it's always best to communicate back with requesters, let them know what costs are, and always remind requesters that inspection does not incur a cost. If they want copies of everything, that might incur a copying fee, but if they are, you know, local and are able to come and inspect something, there should be no charge for someone coming to inspect something. So, you know, trying as much as possible to provide the best service, serve the transparency need of the requester, but also recognize that sometimes fulfilling particularly broad requests can have a big financial burden on the municipality. You can also, in your request or in your clarification contact, so if you, you know, are falling back to try and narrow the scope, you can suggest or solicit alternative scopes of interest. And it is recommended by the Department of Justice as well to communicate regularly if something's going to take a while. There isn't a hard legal number of days that constitute, you know, procrastinating on fulfilling records requests, but the Department of Justice within their own department operates on a 10-business-day turnaround time. And if something's going to take longer than that, they encourage their own employees to send updates of maybe an estimated timeline or explain, you know, please bear with us, we're seeking to fulfill this. Just good customer service really what it comes down to. Don't do anything that would make it look like you're trying to hide something. If no records exist that serve the request that was put forward, that's fine, you can inform the requester in writing of that. There are some rare cases where absolute right of access is guaranteed, you know, a lot of them relate to court documents or police department documents, so it might be books and papers that are required to be kept by a sheriff, clerk of certain courts, county officials, daily arrest logs or police blotters. And then there are very short-listed things that are always going to be denied, including information related to a current investigation of a possible employee criminal conduct or misconduct, plans or specifications for state buildings, patient healthcare records, pupil in a school setting records. So you really need to be weighing on a case-by-case basis if they fit the public interest test, applying that balancing test to make sure, is it a responsive record? Is this record going to serve the public interest in transparency? And does it potentially jeopardize the safety or best interest of someone that has a right to the privacy of that information? The identity of the requester and the purpose of the request are generally not a part of the balancing test, so while you are weighing this on a case-by-case basis, you're not deciding it based on motive, you're deciding it purely on the balancing test and that public interest part. Redaction, so as I said before, if a part of record is disposable but not the entire thing, you do so easily have to disclose the part of the record that is disposable. And depending on the format of the communication, you can redact it different ways. So, you know, you can black out certain lines in a Sharpie and photocopy it, you can do something really low-tech, like if the top half is disposable, put a white piece of paper over the bottom half and photocopy it. It gets a little trickier when you're using formats that might be requested like audio or visual. If there is a video that someone requests and you can't disclose part of it, and I was trying to think of an example, I don't know why you would have maybe, I was thinking, okay, what if it's an employee, you know, investigation? I don't know why you would have that video taped, but if you did and that was requested and it was public record and part of it was disposable, you would have to pay to edit the video, to blur that out or to block out a segment of the video. If you don't have staff on hand that can do that, you might have to incur costs in order to do that. So it depends a lot on the format. And as I said, it's, the redaction costs are incurred by the authority but cannot be passed on to the请求. Just a few other things to know with responding to public record requests. Written requests must be responded to in writing. Verbal requests can be responded to in writing. You can, if somebody calls and asks something and you know the answer right away, you can call them back, but, I mean, this is all about records, best to make a record of it, particularly when you're responding to records, because if you, let's say you end up denying the request or you don't fulfill the request to the extent that the请求 wants it, if you have to go to the next level where they appeal it, you want to have a paper trail of all of your interactions and show that you did due diligence in trying to fulfill this request. Requests for clarification to the请求, so when you're asking to narrow that scope, that is not legally considered a denial. So it is okay to clarify and seek clarification and engage with the individual who's requesting. That should not be considered a denial and should not count against you. If a records request is denied, the请求 contacted the municipality must be informed that the denial is subject to review and enforcement action or by application to a district attorney or attorney general. Reasons should be specific and sufficient as to why you had to deny them. And denial should indicate the reason for denial and demonstrate that the custodian used the balancing test and exercised the best judgment in the interest of public safety to deny that request. Again, turnaround time is not mandated, but it is quote, "as soon as practicable and without delay," or 10 business days to the mag of the Department of Justice. Costs passed on to the请求 must be actual, necessary, and direct costs only. Copying and reproduction, mailing and shipping, those offsite location sourcing costs might be one. You may not charge for redaction, you may require prepayment only if the amount is greater than $5. You may also, as always, try and provide that best customer service by reducing the cost, by limiting the scope, or providing records for free to requesters. And the state also recommends, as much as possible, clarify and reduce the scope of requests in order to reduce that cost. Try as best you can by keeping good records to facilitate prompt response times and keep careful records so that cost estimates can be justified and hopefully not be a large burden to requesters. I did have some exceptions listed here, they're pretty limited. There are a lot of them relate to the police department or to human resource type instances. The police department ones relate to driver's license information and that's something where I would always defer to your local police department officials and, you know, what their administration says can and cannot be released. And that's really meant to be in the best interest and safety of the public. Some interest that's on driver, some information that's on driver's licenses is considered so sensitive that it should not be released, things like, you know, identifying information like your home address or like your height or weight. I would really not love to have my weight publicly released. Last but not least, it's important to remember that mandamus action to challenge, and I always say that word wrong, so hopefully that was right, but to challenge if all or part of a record is withheld, that basically means if you guys decide to withhold all or part of a record and that person decides to appeal it, it can incur legal costs for the municipality. And if it was found that you inappropriately did not release the record, that请求's legal fees may become your responsibility depending on the decision. Delay, denial, or charge of excessive fees that are found to be arbitrary and capricious may result in punitive damages being exercised. may result in punitive damages being exercised against municipality, as well as fines, individually tampering of public records notices, you know, such as like deleting things that you don't want to be requested, anytime you do that with the intent to injure or deprive is considered a felony, so really not a risk worth thinking. Anybody have any questions on this stuff? Okay, well, please keep in touch if you do think of something either on one of the topics that we covered, or if you have a question about another topic, or you'd like another revit exception like this, please let me know, I'm happy to come back and I'm happy to stay in the loop and again, be a liaison between you guys and the local government center to get you the best information I can on topics like this. Thank you again for having me, I'll take your blue and pink slips.